Yeah.
Good evening. We will call to order the meeting of the Warrick County Commissioners for August 25th, 2025. Sheriff, please.
The flag of the United States of America and to the father for which stands one nation, God, indivisible, with the just.
All right, so skip right past APC and all business this morning. Items for discussion first is the Health Department Board Member Appointment. Tabled a few times.
Dr. Kari, Warrick County Health Department Health Officer. And I'm happy to finally report that we do have confirmation that Dr. Seibert, or is it Seibert?
It's Seibert.
Seibert is very excited and willing to serve on the Health Board.
She's amazing.
I'm excited to meet her.
Thank you so much for working on that.
Yeah, no problem.
Both of you.
No problem. So if we could get that approved, and then I guess you guys had asked for an update too. I'm happy to give you.
I'll make a motion to appoint Dr. Seibert to the Health Board.
I second the motion.
The first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just three zero.
Okay. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
So we wanted to give you just a little bit of update of things that we've been doing recently. So in July, we went out to the Warrick County Bridge Fair. Gave out lots of information, lots of handouts. We handed out lots of buggy bands to children for infectious disease prevention. We handed out several gun locks as well for injury prevention as well. And vaccine handout information as well as lots of sunscreen for cancer prevention. And hydration packets for staying hydrated during that very hot, humid week in July.
Thank you, those are great ideas.
Yeah, easy things and kids love them, so.
You had a really good turnout.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
We also did National Night Out Events in August. Boonville and Elberfeld were the same nights, but we were able to attend both of those and pass out very similar handouts and items that we did at the county fair. We've attended the Newburgh Elementary Back to School Bash with the intent of getting kids signed up to come in and get their vaccinations. Just this past Saturday, we were at the Warrick County Hospital 50th Anniversary Celebration, and that was a very successful event. We handed out five car seats, got one installed that day for a child who came to the event not in a car seat. So that was super exciting. We passed out five different pack-in plays for safe sleep. And then we ran out, which is a good problem to have, and handed out business cards. And we've already had people calling to get items. So we're gonna be ordering some more and hopefully handing out some more for safe sleep and everything. We also ran out of gun locks. We passed out 50 more gun locks at the Warrick County Hospital Event as well. And more sunscreen, more buggy bands, and disease prevention information, safe sleep stuff. We have gone to the schools and handed out education for food and sanitation. We've handed out 42 different radon kits. We've also handed out to the Warrick County Schools 15 packets box kits for headlives. Things we're working on and that we've recently just also signed. We've signed an MOU with Matthew 25. They're gonna provide us with condoms and safe sex education that we can then pass out to anybody who comes into the clinic and to all of our events. We've working on an agreement with Purdue Extension. They're gonna do our dining with diabetes to educate people how to make healthy food choices, especially those with diabetes, as well as a matter of balance geared towards the elderly in fall prevention, which is our highest injury that we see in Warrick County is falls and mostly in the elderly. We've also done an MOU with TriCap to promote healthy lifestyles, both to mainly family units and also children. We went out and visited Sanctuary on the Hill, and we're brainstorming ideas of how we can partner with them, hopefully in the future. It's a beautiful space out there. We were quite amazed.
I need to go out.
It was beautiful. It is impressive, and it's tucked away. And it was interesting, we were driving up the hill, and he's like, one of the gentlemen explaining it, he's like, I'm from Florida, and he's like, Disney World was big impression upon me. He's like, my idea is that you don't see the building until you kind of crest over this hill. And he's absolutely right, all the wildlife and everything that they're gonna leave there, and then you get to the top, and then it's just, it's beautiful out there. So hopefully more to come. We're thinking about ideas how we can partner in the future, especially when they get open. We've also reached out to Ronald McDonald House Mobile Unit, so they're working on coming into Warrick County, and hopefully we're gonna help them set that up. This isn't the house that's at the hospitals. This is their mobile unit that's geared towards infant and child mortality reduction and safety. We've done asthma training with our public health nurse, and that's one of our things we want to get into the schools coming up in the school year is kind of asthma action plans for children in our school system with asthma. And then obviously continuing with our outreach and immunizations. And we're looking forward to planning some vaccine clinics for the fall to everybody get their flu shots, so.
Awesome.
I'd like to applause. This warms my healthcare heart so much. I am so thrilled to hear all of this, you guys.
Good.
I swear, you must just sit around and go, okay, what else can we do?
We do.
This afternoon, yeah.
Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, who wants to top that? Proposal for Keller, Schroder, SMS renewal?
This was, this was tabled at the last meeting. We had attached the wrong contract to the back of the service agreement. We now have the correct contract. It is for... Just flip the page. Twenty-six, $24,630. It consists of six payments, $193 for six months, and then 12 payments of $1,956. The six payments make $1,001.58. The 12 is $23,752, for a total of $24,630.
One of my questions was the $193 per month times six. Is that an hourly service that they're providing, or what is that?
So that's the Trelex Onboarding. They do a comprehensive assessment of the Trelex environment, reconnect the Trelex network, security appliance in line with the firewalls, assess third-party integrations with Trelex, provide recommendations for ensuring the platform is being used to the full potential. It's a monthly fee, but that's what it was for. That's what we were missing.
Guide to easier, better manage.
I know we need it. Where, did you decide where you could budget that from?
Not yet. I know we need to have it. I gave you the current sheet today, what we have left to spend. And it depends on what gets approved by the council next week. And if you approve it, subject two, I could put it on the next one and put it in front of them.
I think we almost have to keep doing it that way.
We have to keep this, correct?
It's probably gonna happen.
To like approve subject, additional appropriations.
Yep.
We could also table it if you want. It's not something, it's not a system that we have, it's new.
I thought this was an extension of, I thought this was, they're still doing this. And we were just...
That's what I thought as well.
I thought this was a service that they're still doing that we actually just don't have.
Trelex part is new. So yeah, you're right.
Trelex is just $11.58.
That is continued, but some of it's new. I'll make a motion to prove it contingent upon council's budget.
I second that.
All right, so first and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Zero.
I think I just saw somebody from Peabody walk in.
Yes, the Peabody Road Use Agreement.
Hi. My name's Ed Hartsburg, and I'm here to talk about the road terminations for Eby and Tecumseh Road. I know Bob's been working with Bobby on getting the roads back to y'all's specs. I know they had an inspection out there today. I don't know what that, what the findings are, but I've got, as we agreed before, I've got the payment for the escrow for the blacktop on Tecumseh Road. And as far as Morley has done the route survey, and I think I sent that to Bobby. And so I think we're, you know, depending on what Bobby's findings are, I think we're moving along on these terminations.
Bobby?
Just for the record, I got them an hour ago.
Yeah, I just, I just got them myself, Bobby.
I haven't had a chance to review them.
Do you want to take a minute?
No, it's gonna take a while to go through all this, so.
I was gonna be impressed if Morley sent them to you, Bob. I apologize.
Nope, not a problem. And then in regards to Jeff's inspection, there were a few deficiencies. And I, but they're fairly close. I would ask if the board would be willing to look at possibly the termination of these agreements, subject to my department's final inspections, so that if it gets done before the next meeting, then they don't have to wait to go forward with their plans.
Council here with that?
Yes.
The motion as Bobby stated.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, now I've got those termination agreements with me. You need me to pass them around now for signatures?
You can give them to Debbie and we'll sign.
Okay.
After Bobby looks them over.
Okay, that's fine. And then as far as the escrow, just go ahead and give it to Debbie also. Thank you.
All right, so we have the first two.
Aye.
Okay.
They, I would say that for either you sign them on behalf, or however you want to do it. And I've got two copies.
Action Agenda.
Some people want to have.
Approval of the minutes from the August 11th, 2025 meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Here's three zero.
Under the consent agenda, where I'm asking for approval of the first six items. I can do them individually, or you can do them all at one time. It's your choice. Okay, first is payroll voucher number 17 in the amount of $609,729.21.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is accounts payable voucher ending August 25th, 2025, in the amount of $3,362,926.21.
Approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next is, it says approval of non-certified claims. And I think the number that you all have in there is like 1,700 something. It's $207.26 is the corrected one. One is a mileage claim, and the other... Sorry.
Debbie, I have two of those. One is the $207.26.
That's the correct one.
But then there's also the one that says Commonwealth Engineering?
Yeah, I tried to put those in real quick, and I didn't get them all taken out of your books.
Okay, so that's a no on that.
Correct.
Correct.
That is not included.
Okay.
It is just mileage and receipt for parking.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next is approval of the County's Treasury Report for July 2025.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is approval of the annual pumpkin giveaway on October the 3rd by ERA First Advantage Realty, Friday, October the 3rd, and it'll be located at 8711 West Highway 66 in Newburgh. Bobby and the sheriff have both signed off on this. It's something that happens every year.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next is approval of the Centerpoint Bill for the Warrick County Security Center in the amount of $1,940.48.
What was that number again?
$1,000. Thank you.
Make motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I want to add something in the middle of this that didn't make it on the agenda, that did not receive it today, but I would like to get approval of the donations made this week to animal control. Do I just read each one, or we just approve? Read each one? One is from Jay Hall for $10. One is from M Becker 500, another from M Becker for 500, one from T Phillips, first 10, and one from M Jarboe for 200. And I'd like approval of the, to accept these donations so we can put it in Animal Control's Donation Fund.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, under regular business, I brought opioid grant applications for approval. These have been reviewed by the Opioid Grant Board and approved. The first is the Chandler Volunteer Fire Department, the Newburgh Volunteer Fire Department, Fidgen Township Volunteer Fire Department, Skelton Owen Fire Territory, and they're all requesting $27,400 to get a striker chest compression machine.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next is the Newburgh Girl Softball, asking for $25,000 to do volunteer and coach training initiatives to help the kids that they coach informed about the dangers of drugs and substance abuse in mental health services. Newburgh Girl Softball.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Last one is the Cancer Pathways Midwest, $25,000 for...
We have a vote on that one?
We need a vote on that one.
Oh, I did hear you.
Give me just, give me just one second here. I'm still trying to wrap my head around what they're actually going to do with the funds specifically.
For which?
The Newburgh.
Yeah.
They put in their mental health services.
I mean, I get it, it's like positive youth engagement, structured activities. I guess I kind of want to know what those... What is it that they're going to do? Have they said like specifically what they're gonna use the money for? Or is it on this?
They had originally, yes.
Well, I'm looking at.
They're going to.
Equipment and safety enhancement, improvements and maintenance, volunteer protection. Yeah. I, so again, like, I'm not trying to be...
They're talking about a scholarship program, 15% of the money.
Right.
To cover registration fees for girls whose families face financial hardships. Equipment and safety enhancements, 35%. Improvement and maintenance, 35%. I mean, I can read all this.
I know.
Volunteer and coach initiatives, 15%.
I guess I personally would have liked to see a larger percentage of that go for, like, to make sure that kids could play that wouldn't normally be able to play.
Okay.
And not so much, that's just me. And if you guys vote against me, that's fine. I just feel like, you know, 70%, well, that's like 15% is, is for kids registration. 70% is for equipment improvement.
I think you can always make a recommendation or request they consider.
I see what you're saying, usually when softball's expensive.
Yeah.
As a parent, I know that. And that usually that doesn't go to kids that don't have the means to play.
Be able to play. And I guess what I would like, when I think about getting to an organization like this, and my kids play these sports always, I would like to see more of it go towards making sure that the children that wouldn't normally be able to play, that those are the ones we're trying to save, right? By saying the softball.
More of a percentage towards that.
Yeah, you know, to make sure that they have the registration paid for, as well as like equipment, because it is expensive, you know, not every kid can afford, even though just the uniforms or the cleats. So I would personally like to see a heavier portion of it go towards that and not what they would normally, you know, I mean, if, if, if they were to make an argument that, well, if we provide these scholarships, then it's going to increase our registration by X percentage, so we need to increase our, you know, spending on maintenance, and then I could see it, but, I don't know, that's just me. I would like to see more of the money.
I can make a recommendation to them that that's what you would like.
Yeah.
We can change it to say that, can't we?
Pardon me?
We can make the motion to reflect that.
Well, right now, we have a motion on the table to accept and a second to accept, so.
I thought it already said that in there, so.
They did have it in there. That was the, the financial hardship scholarship.
Do I drop my motion, and Terry drops his second?
Is it your motion?
I think it was Terry's motion.
You just amended your motion to include the recommendation.
I'll just amend my motion to ask the board to, their board to consider our board's request.
Request, I second that motion.
So we're going to grant it? We're just making a recommendation that they shift the numbers around a little bit? Or do we send it back to them and say, come again?
I think this is the second time they submitted.
This is the second time they've been here.
The first one, there wasn't much, I don't think there was any.
Yeah, so they amended it.
And again, it kind of goes to the, the nature of the grant, I think. If you, if you want to just send it back to them and ask for, you know, provide the recommendation, then, you know, that's the, that's the motion, and that's fine.
What is the motion?
Right now, it's to make a recommendation to use more of the funds for that one category.
Okay.
But just to be clear, there's not really any...
There's no stipulation that they have to.
No stipulation, and, you know, not a specific number that the commissioners are asking. So that's the motion.
I would make the recommendation for 50%. 50% be used for the scholarship. I think that's...
Amend your motion to have a recommendation.
I'll amend my motion.
Men, amend in motion.
Yep, so I'll amend my motion to grant the grant and require that they use 50% of it for scholarships. Is this a scholarship?
Scholarship program.
Specific, okay, there you go.
Ready?
Ready.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys.
That's okay.
It's a good thing, yeah.
The last one is for Cancer Pathways Midwest, and they are asking for $25,000. It's 15.7% of their total cost of delivering vital oncology-focused mental health support, wellness services, and program access to Warrick County residents who've been impacted by cancer, and to sustain vital evidence-based programs and services to Warrick County residents who are due to the impacts of cancer, who are also at an increased risk of opioid misuse.
Just for the, the cancer survivor, family, both?
I didn't know about that either. Is it for the, the patient or the family?
So they provide clinical services, oncology-focused wellness classes, facilities and program delivery infrastructure, and 426 hours of oncology-focused educational programming to Warrick County residents.
So it does say that studies show that 30 to 35% of cancer patients experience psychiatric disorders throughout their cancer journey, and the pain affects up to 70%. So I think this is focused on the patient. I can definitely support that.
Yeah, I do too.
What's the dollar round?
$25,000.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next is approval of the Youth First Contract. The Youth First is the agency that supports and administers the Warrick County Drug-Free Council's funding. They've done it for years. We just needed to update the contract. They charge $607, $607.05 per month, and this would be starting April 1 through March 31, 2026.
Make motion to approve.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
So the county gets money from the state to give out small grants to agencies for Warrick County drug-free, like the school got one last year, and I think the sheriff supplied for one this year. So that money goes into a pot from the state, and that's the money that's available to them. It's divided in administration and then the grants. And each of the grants have, there's four purposes. And so Youth First has always been the administrator of that program and these fundings. And we've had a contract, I looked for like four or five years, or since it really started, and we just didn't have one that's current.
I'll second.
So first and second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have, but now I'll become Sherry Cedars. She isn't here this evening. She wanted to table number two till she could be back, which was the highway new Mac Trucks. She did want to award the cyclical reassessment bids from last meeting. See if I can get it down here pretty close. The bid in, the current bid is $786,300, which is an increase of $93,043 from last year. There was only one bid, and it is from Tyler Technologies. Sarah Redmond also wrote a letter that she concurs with having the county award this contract to Tyler Technologies. And there's a lot of information there, if you want to read it.
And then we already have?
Yeah.
This was the one they opened in front of us?
Correct.
Right.
All that.
And she just wanted to...
She wants it to be awarded, yes. She reviewed them.
All right.
That's our current vendor, right?
Pardon me?
That's our current vendor, right?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the last thing she has is Boonville, City Boonville has requested assistance from the Commissioners for the Labor Day Parade. I put a breakdown, Sherry actually worked on this, and put the breakdown of the cost they're requesting. The total, if we did everything, would be $4,525. You could do portions, all, whatever it is that you prefer. One is one-third of the rental of the fairgrounds, then the ambulance service and the dumpster service. And she told me that she has talked to Chief Wells and County Sheriff's Officers about it. That's where she got her numbers from.
So... One-third of the rent, what is, who pays the other two-thirds?
I do not know.
I think the city.
That's what I would like to know, like, what, what, they're asking for our help, what are they paying?
Yeah.
Didn't ask that.
Let's see if I can find a past email. This is something we've known ever since I've been a Commissioner and probably before that. A lot of our contribution, as you can see, is just discounted pricing on some of the items. Well, that's just the... on some of the items. Well, that's just the dumpster rental. I also want to clarify, this is not for the Labor Day Parade. It's for the entire Labor Day.
For the whole weekend?
Yeah.
But it says Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah. Obviously, this is my first year being involved in this. There's no fund that's set up between the three communities that rotate the hosting of this?
I think, I think there's, it's a little bit complicated because the Labor Day Board has to vote on where they're going to have it every year, whether it's going to be in Warwick County, Pike County, Gibson County, and then at that time, once that's decided, then it becomes a new conversation.
So I'm going to go back to that board has no funding?
Apparently not.
They should ask for donations from the unions.
I think the tourism board has supported it in the past, which makes sense for all the people that come in. So that goes back to two thousand and twenty-three. While we're watching, Terry, look at his phone. The opioid grant, were those coming from the restricted or unrestricted?
Restricted.
Thank you.
Yes.
All of them?
All of them. That's the only grant program we have right now. It's restricted.
Thanks. I'm not finding anything else.
So then I guess my, I kind of feel like, this is next weekend, right?
If it's on Labor Day.
We're just now getting.
I kind of feel like we helped out the four-H fairgrounds quite a bit last year, and they always said if we could help, that could provide anything to let them know. And I kind of think we could donate our portion if they would allow it.
Say that again?
If they would allow us to just donate what our cost is, since we own the fairgrounds.
That's not up to, that's up to the.
That's what I said.
Four-H boards.
With the four-H board, we helped quite a bit last year, and they told me if there was ever a time they could pay us back, and it was a lot of money we gave them. I don't know if they can survive on it. I'm not speaking for them. I'm just saying.
Is, is there, is there liability involved in this? Is that why we have to rent and?
I don't know the details of anything. There's liability involved in everything. So Commissioners, City of Boonville, and Tourism Board.
What?
That's who has split it in the past.
I have to read.
Debbie is also the problem. There's not a line item to take that money from.
We don't have any money to take it from. No.
I just feel like there was an assumption made without discussion, and this isn't the time financially to assume.
I like Debbie's idea if we can get the Labor Day or the four-H board, not many people together at once that quickly. From all that it's possible.
And then we don't know if, if we are, I'm assuming that means that we are not splitting the cost of the ambulance service or the dumpster service. We're carrying a hundred percent of that.
Yes.
Then I would kind of like to know what the other entities are. Somewhere down to the wire here, so I don't know how to get that information quickly. And this is all, for me, it's coming from a point that, you know, we're going before the county council monthly, explaining to them that we are quickly running out of money. And then I don't know how we then go to them and say, but, you know, we allowed somebody to put a four thousand, five hundred and twenty-five dollar bill in front of us and we paid it blind.
I didn't know anything about this till last Friday.
Neither.
So. Did you table it?
It won't do any good. It's, it's coming weekend, so we do it or we don't.
Yeah.
But you're saying that we don't have any funds to do it, correct?
No.
So then, okay.
Not without asking counsel, counsel for it.
And then that's after the fact again, going back to them and saying, I know that you told us to.
I mean, I hate that. I hate to do that to them, but we were not aware. Or I wasn't aware.
It's not a big bill. I'm pretty sure they'll fund it elsewhere, honestly.
So do you want to make?
I mean, we can still work on the, seeing if we can get that, you know, that twenty-six, seventy-five donated. And then really, that's only putting them at eighteen fifty.
Right.
So, okay. Do you got a call you want me to make, or do you have a contact?
The board president comes in occasionally, but I know he, that's what he's told me. Anytime that they could repay us, to let him know.
I'll call him.
Okay. Who is that?
Kim Williams.
Take that part off.
So that's a motion to deny.
Yeah, or just you don't have to motion. You just move on.
As much as we hate to do it.
Yeah.
All right. Bobby.
First item I have is Warke Trails. It's the request for acceptance of the trail on Anderson Road between Van and Lincoln. This trail has been constructed to the approved plan, and my understanding is the trail group, Warke Trails, the Parks Department, and the Highway Department will all participate in maintenance of the trail. We'll do our normal mowing of the trail from the Highway Department side, so they would request acceptance.
It's a nice addition.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item I have is our service agreement. It's with our fuel system. We've had it in place since two thousand and thirteen, and we're starting to have a few maintenance issues. So in order to get that maintenance hourly rate cost down, they were, they put before us a request, a maintenance agreement, a service agreement, that would also upgrade our software. And the total of that is five hundred and fifty dollars. It'd be paid out of my budget, and I request approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, so she made a motion, but I have a question. Sherry is, I think, currently working on the fuel contract bid?
Yeah, this is.
How's that in relation to that? So are that includes new tanks?
Right. Well, this, this right now is our current, just our current fuel system.
Yep.
Maintenance of the existing pumps, where it reads into our computer system, so it's all.
How's that planned at the bidding process, though? What happens if somebody else wins the bid and comes and puts in new tanks?
This is not relevant to the same company. This is with Fuel Master, so it's separate. It came on separate from the tanks. It's a completely separate entity. The tanks and things she's doing won't have a fuel system.
Okay. All right. I get it.
Make a motion.
To approve.
Can you make the motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Debbie, I have a copy that's been signed by, they just emailed it today.
Okay, we have that service agreement.
Right.
Okay.
So it's, it's in here. They just sent it to me.
All right.
With their signature on our service agreement.
Okay, thank you.
And then I have approval request for pay-up number six with Regal for the bridge on one forty-eight, and that is for a total of sixty-two thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents. And this includes everything but the retainage at this point in time, which I expect they will be billing for shortly, but I recommend approval of pay-up number six for sixty-two thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Cheryl?
I have Ellen.
Cliff?
Nothing.
Terry?
Nothing.
Stacy?
I do have a couple people that have signed in for public comment. Sean Hebner?
Yes, I'm Sean Hebner from Lexington subdivision in Newburgh. So the subdivision started in oh-six, oh-seven, and it's been through three people that I know of. Bruce Miller started this subdivision, went bankrupt, the bank got it. Now Kush Patel bought the lots. He has since sold those lots, but he has letter of credit with, for sidewalks. There are several homeowners here today. He keeps getting an extension every year. I talked to Molly Barnhill, area planning first, and she sent me here. Every year, he just asks for extensions, so I don't know what. It's past the max amount of years that normal extensions are granted, so I don't know.
So basically, you would like the sidewalks?
Yeah. Well, what's going on is we've got six new homes in there since February, and we're nearing the completion of our side of the subdivision. And there's houses that's partly, sidewalks are partly done. Well, he has, and I don't know what powers he has, but he has went to those homeowners and said, you've got ninety days to complete these. I don't know that that's, I don't know all the.
Depends on what kind of agreement he would have with them or not.
Yeah, whenever he sold the lot to them, I don't know if he's got it in writing that they were supposed to do that or what, but I know he has thirty-seven, approximately thirty-seven thousand dollars in.
It was explained to him that our, our issue is with him, so whether he's got an agreement with the county, with the other property owners or not, the county has an agreement and a letter of credit with him, so.
So the recourse at this point would be?
Put the contractor, developer, I guess, on notice that the county will not do any more extensions. And I think you said you thought it was up again in November.
Yeah, that's what Molly told me. It was up again in November, so they start next month.
We need to let area planning know that they need to send a letter letting them know that this board is in a consensus that this letter of credit will not be extended again, and that we expect that the sidewalks be constructed by the end of the.
By that date.
Date of the letter of credit expiring.
Yeah, we have, we have new homes that in our HOA covenant, you know, you're supposed to put in the sidewalk and have all this done before you can move in. I know of one home, they've only lived there a few months, that they, they were going to pay to do their sidewalk. I don't want to be speaking for them. They're here, but they were planning on doing this, and I'm like.
Is it, are you Ladonna by chance? Okay.
You know, I don't know if you want to talk about it or.
So it's extremely frustrating. We bought, I'm sorry, Ladonna Schmidt. My husband and I, Mike, bought two lots in the back of the subdivision. We are on a corner. And so the lineage for our sidewalks is somewhere two hundred to two hundred and twenty-five linear feet, so it's quite expensive. Our builder had quoted us somewhere in the neighborhood of about twelve to fifteen thousand dollars to put those sidewalks in. So we were going to do that because we were under the impression it was our responsibility. But when we, the only thing that stopped us is there is a fire hydrant that has been placed there, and it is right smack dab in the way of the sidewalks that were already approved by the.
Right. And I talked to Mr. Patel about that at our last meeting, and I asked him to talk to Indiana American Wanderer to see if, what they are willing to do, because they had the plan to show where that sidewalk was to go when they placed that hydrant. So it's my opinion they should relocate the hydrant.
So we cannot put, even if we were willing to pay for them, which we are if it's our responsibility, but if it's not our responsibility, obviously, we don't want to put that bill. Plus, if we can't get them into code, we don't want that to come back to be our problem as well. And it has kind of stopped us from, we've been living there about ten weeks now, and it has stopped us from completing our yard, from putting in our dog fence, from doing anything, because we don't want to put it all in and then have to rip it all back out again. So we're just asking for him to be pushed, I guess.
Yeah, does he have a timeframe for anyone that this needs to be done?
I think that's what Bobby was saying, is that if we don't.
Right, right, right now, his letter of credit expiring is his timeframe.
Okay.
And whether or not he asks for an extension, again, has yet to be seen, because he has not been put on notice, I don't think, by the area planning commission, that his extension, his last extension is expiring.
And if it expires, then.
Before it expires, they will have my office do an inspection. If they're not constructed, then we will pull his letter of credit, and then we will finish the sidewalks with his dollar amounts.
How many empty parcels are there in this that are yet to be completed?
So there's, he plans on going to the area planning commission to ask for only a certain amount to be waived, and that's the area man, planning commission board, and I don't know when he's going to that, but.
Yeah, like I said, I started out talking to them, and they said it was part of commissioners, but, you know, there's, there's new houses on corners, and the builder has put in new sidewalks in the front, but not went on around to the end of the street. And I know there's drawings from whenever it started, the way it was supposed to be. Me personally, I'd like to see it done the way it was supposed to be, all the sidewalks done. I mean, it's our, you know, our investment, our.
Yep.
It's a nice, smaller subdivision in Warwick County, and just like to see it finished finally. It's been, you know, through so many people and.
Did you say two thousand and six?
I, Mike, do you know what year that was started?
It was two thousand and six.
Six, okay, yeah. So, you know, it's way, way past when the county should be taking it over, but there's, it's, it's ugly. There's, it's supposed to be two foot, what is it, Bobby? Two foot, four foot?
There should be a two-foot gap usually between.
Or six foot of concrete.
Or six foot of concrete.
And it's, there's fire hydrants where, I know one neighbor's here also, there's a fire hydrant in his yard, and they just went right through it with concrete, you know, so they can't put concrete so many feet around it. You know, there's a lot of, so that's where Kush is trying to say now, well, it's already messed up. Can we do part of the job right and not the other, and.
And that's going to the area planning commission board on whether or not he can have waiver of his sidewalks.
I'm good with sending a letter from APC to push, push them along, but I mean, I think technically, the decision is that the November meeting in front of the commissioners, when we, we either accept or deny.
Right.
The extension, and they'll need to remind us at that time. We see so much of this stuff. I want to be able to remember exactly what this is.
Yeah, I understand.
Maybe, maybe you guys, a couple of you could plan on coming back there.
November.
I think, though, you can see that we all agree with you and what's, we want it finished as well.
Yeah, there's just, like I said, there's a lot of places I'm sure he's trying to get out of, because one of them is the retention area where there's a ditch. It seems like a waste for sidewalk to go on down through there, but the new builder, there's five houses, and he's just going to stop and then go, it's down to Firstill Road, actually.
So are all the parcels sold? You asked that.
Well, a builder came in and bought ten lots. Kush has one lot left, and seven of those lots are sold, and houses are sold in the last, since February. So it's just taken off, and then that builder has three lots left, and his plan is. And his plan is keep on building, so, and he said he'd have it filled up by the end of the year. I don't, it might be next spring, but, you know, weather permitting.
It's entirely fair for you guys to come and ask us for this. First of all, I do want to give Mr. Patel a little bit of grace, you know, this is not his whole back full of problems. There's been, sounds like fire hydrants installed in the wrong spots and developers and banks before him, so.
Personally, I think he bought into
It's a good point.
something that he didn't know all the problems and-
Yep.
So, yeah, I give him that. I mean, he's been, and that's what's funny, he's been great communicating until the sidewalk thing brought up that he was going to, it was like he knew that these lots were moving quick, so he went to two of the neighbors and said, hey, you've got three days to do these sidewalks. And then after that, the communication with him is just nothing. Texts, calls, anything, so I don't know. There's a little bit of pressure there, you know, that he don't, he don't know what to say or do or don't, you know?
Yeah.
So.
So then it's going to go to APC, and then it will come to us in November?
Yeah, if that's the actual expiration date, yes. Normally, they send it out a month in advance to the
Yeah.
let the developer know that it's expiring, and they either have to get it finished or they send in a request for an extension. And so then when the extension requests would come into this board, this board would just not approve that request. But I'd like to put the developer on notice that we're not going to approve that request.
So are you doing that as the county engineer?
Well, I'll talk to the area planning and talk to, get the number for Mr. Patel.
I was going to say, I don't know, my guess, my question was, will Molly do that based on our ask, or does council need to call?
She would normally-
APC council?
She would normally do it if I asked, or I can do it.
Just don't want it to get hung up.
We could do it both at the same time, that usually-
That means, yeah.
Yeah, Molly said he would get a letter in September.
Okay.
And then he would have to reply in October, and then the meeting would be November. So we, there's two meetings a month, is that right?
Yes.
Which meeting would that be?
Just call, and when we, when area planners are put on the agenda, call me and I'll tell you which one it is.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, one more item really quickly. The no parking resolution that was talked about today, did that-
I, it's getting time.
Okay. That's all I need to know. It was approved at the last meeting, subject to the actual drafting of it, but I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
He said, everybody out there was for the Lexington? All right. Motion, second?
Second.
Do you have it with you? Do I need to print one off?
Yeah, I sent it to them.
Oh, I didn't. I brought the, I brought the original. This is, I don't think Mike-
Oh, yeah. Just don't want you to fall down and break your knee.
He'll probably do that.
Walk up here and they hit that step. I've only seen it happen once, but it's happened times.